Real call.
Roe is absent. Bagley.
Here.
Harding. Johnson. Melton. Palermo.
Here.
Mr. President.
Here. Please stand for the pledge and remarks by Councilmember Wannabe Johnson.
I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to do regardless of which stands one nation under God, the individual liberty of the Constitution.
All right, I would like for everyone to continue standing, please. It's with heavy sadness that on Sunday, October 24th, pedestrian was traveling on Highway 75 in Hamilton in District 2, was met with a vehicle traffic injury and died. And so at this time, I would like for us to bow our head for him and his loss and his family. Thank you. Thirty seconds. Thank you.
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of the legislative chambers.
Good afternoon and welcome to the Omaha City Council. We look forward to hearing your testimony today on our many items. I'd encourage you to turn your cell phones off or at least turn them to vibrate.
Items 6 and 7 can be considered together for a vestancia located northeast of 216th and Fort Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 6, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat with waivers to Section 53-82B cul-de-sac length, 53-914 green corners, and 53-83 block length. Item 7, a resolution to approve a waiver to the present development zone specifications of the urban development element of the City of Omaha master plan.
Public hearing and vote on number 6 and 7 is today. The applicant, please.
Kyle Vol, 10909 Mill Valley Road, E&amp;A Consulting Group. I'm the engineer on the project here on behalf of Falcone Land Development. This project's located on the northeast corner of 216th and Fort. It's adjacent to the dam site 12, the new dam site 12. This is the third phase of our vestancia project. This is 157 lots and grading is underway and infrastructure going in into the spring and summer of next year. Planning Board recommends approval and be happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Real call.
Bagley. Harding. Johnson. Melton. Palermo. Mr. President.
Yes.
Items 6 and 7 are approved, 6 to 0. Items 8 through 10 can be considered together for Highlander East located southwest and southeast of 29th and Burdette Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 8, an ordinance to approve a major amendment to PUR overly district. Item 9, a resolution to approve the final plat. Item 10, a resolution to approve the subdivision agreement.
Public hearing and vote on items 8, 9, and 10 are today. Proponents, please.
Hi, my name's Terry Morrison with Airheart Griffin &amp; Associates, 3552 Farnum Street. I'm here to represent the developer and the owner of Rinshaw Development and 75 North. I can answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Real call.
Bagley. Harding. Johnson. Melton. Palermo. Mr. President.
Yes.
Items 8 through 10 are approved, 6 to 0. Items 11 through 16 can be considered together for North Streams located northeast of 204th and Q Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Items 11 through 13, ordinances to rezone this property from AG District to DR District, R4 District, and MU District. Item 14, an ordinance to approve a mixed-use district development agreement. Item 15, a resolution to approve the final plat. Item 16, a resolution to approve the subdivision agreement.
Public hearing and vote on items 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, and 16 is today. The applicant, please.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council, Larry Jovan, 11440 West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the developer and development. This is a 208 lot subdivision on the northeast corner of 204th and Q Street. Here to answer any questions. It'll be zoned R4, DR, and MU. So it's quite a large development and this is just the final plat and rezoning of this development. So here for questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Real call.
Bagley. Harding. Johnson. Melton. Palermo. Mr. President.
Yes.
Items 11 through 16 are approved, 6 to 0. Item 17, an ordinance to rezone property located at 4810 South 15th Street from R4 District to R5 District. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend denial. Bees communication in opposition.
Public hearing and vote on number 17 is today. Is the applicant here? Any other proponents on number 17? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Mr. Palermo, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I wanted to ask Planning a question about this particular agenda item. It did come with a denial from the Planning Board and Planning Department. Could you elaborate for us, please, on why this R4 was denied, changing it into an R5?
Eric England, Planning Department. This is an existing single-family home. The applicant has intended to us that he would like to convert the building into a duplex. If this was rezoned to R5, it would not meet the lot size or lot width requirements that is needed in order to construct or redevelop into a duplex. So while R5 is technically master plan compliant, we feel it unnecessary to set up something that would need waivers from the zoning board of appeals. This neighborhood is very dense and we believe it's very consistent with single-family homes and should remain that way.
Okay, thank you. And that was my next question, to make sure that this particular individual could still develop a single-family residence on this parcel of property. It is in my district. I did drive by this property and it would be very challenging, although we do hope for higher density in my district, especially with the letter that was sent, where a lot of the communication we heard was on point from the person that wanted to develop this area. But unfortunately, there was a number left and I reached out to this individual and left a message hoping to discuss and maybe work with him on what the future plans would be, but I never got a return call. So at this point in time, with the denials that we've received from the Planning Board and Planning Department, if there's no other lights, I'd make a motion to recommend denial.
Motion in a second. Councilman Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to note, in addition to Councilmember Palermo's comments about trying to reach out to the applicant who hadn't responded at Planning Board, no one showed as a proponent or the applicant for the project, and I note here today that they didn't show as well, too. So Mr. Palermo tried to reach out and got no response, and so I support his motion.
Thank you. Real call.
Bagley.
So this is the vote on the motion?
To deny.
To deny.
To deny, okay. So I would be to-
Deny.
So, yes.
Correct, okay. Aye, thank you.
Yep. Harding. Johnson. Melton. Palermo. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, 6 to 0. Item 18, to consider a Class D liquor license application for Mouth of the South located at 1111 Harney Street.
Public hearing and vote on number 18 is today. The applicant, please.
Ryan Erts, 3422 Forest Lawn.
Can you answer questions?
Yep.
Okay, I'm gonna have a few for you. First, we'll take any other proponents here today. Seeing none, any opponents? Not gonna close the public hearings. I think we'll have some questions for you, and I may propose continuing the public hearing on this one, depending upon how you answer the questions, Ryan. So I appreciate you being here, and I've always supported your restaurant. It's a great restaurant. Mouth of the South used to be located in Florence, and as folks know, there was an unfortunate fire there that left that property vacant. And it's still vacant. I think you since moved out to Lakeside?
Yeah, currently I sold that property, so it's not mine anymore.
Okay. And the restaurant's currently at Lakeside?
Yes, sir.
And are you moving to a new location?
No, we're a second location.
Second location, okay. So who now does own that property in Florence?
I don't remember the company, but they're planning on building on it. I know that. I just don't know when.
Okay. And when was that sold?
About two weeks ago, I believe.
Okay. Well, I still find that problematic. I mean, I'm glad it's sold and I'm hopeful that something new can come in there, but that just happening two weeks ago, I mean, we've had a lot of concerns, and Florence has had a lot of concerns with that property over the last four or five years. Here's a picture of it from earlier this week, right? And so we've had you here before talking about the property and maintaining the property, which really didn't happen. And we've had five now, actually six now, weed and litter complaints through the city. They had to go through the process of a city inspector coming out to inspect the property, observing what I just showed here, and then having the city have to come out and enforce that weed and litter violation that was corrected by you, I think twice, but also twice by the city. And there's an outstanding warrant for it right now, too. So, you know, we can check and double-check who is now responsible for that, if the property has in fact changed hands, but that doesn't excuse the fact that you had six violations in the last five years, right?
Yes, sir.
You wanna address that?
I was just, you know, trying to keep up on it on top of everything else. I mean, it's hard to get somebody down there that wants to do the work. It's a hard area to do. There's a lot of concrete structure in between. They can't get equipment through there. It's just hard to get somebody to go down there and actually do it.
And I would understand that, and I think we gave you some grace last time when that was the answer about a year ago, but things didn't improve and, you know, the expectation is that people take care of their properties.
Yes, sir.
Especially in a sensitive place like a business district, a neighborhood business district. So that causes me a lot of concern. I have no doubt that your establishment and your restaurant's gonna be successful, and I do wish you well with that, but I'm having real trouble with this one today, just given the history on that property and the lack of follow-through, frankly, on what I saw there. And, you know, complaints about every week from the neighborhood there.
Understood. And when I was there, I took care of a lot of stuff that they weren't taking care of when the neighbors were around as well. So, I mean, we constantly have people dumping in that alley. I would constantly call somebody to haul stuff away, tires, batteries, furniture. So, I mean, I took care of that all the time when I was there.
Yeah, and it does sometimes happen on vacant lots, I understand, but, you know, every property owner has that responsibility. So I see there's not a light on. I would feel better if we at least delay this by a week so we can clarify who does own the property and who is gonna make this happen. So we don't send a city inspector out there every couple of weeks, and we aren't having city resources being spent in that regard, and then having an upset neighborhood while we're trying to get it accomplished. I'll stop my remarks for now. I see Councilman Bagley has his light on.
Thanks, Mr. President. Ryan, I know is a frequent, in the past, I'd gone to Mouth of the South when it was down in Florence, and is it friends of mine that live down there and they love it. I had a friend that cooked there for years. So, I mean, looking forward to having you down in my district on 11th and Harney there, but I discussed with President Fesserson this morning the concerns and the challenges you had cleaning up that lot down in Florence there. I can tell you, on my short term on this council, listening to neighborhoods, particularly the old market, they're really prideful on a clean downtown area, old market area. So I want to echo what Council President Fesserson said, that it is a concern where that property down in Florence wasn't cleaned up. I know you're gonna do great because you got a great restaurant down on 11th and Harney, but I'll support Councilman Fesserson on that, that I think we gotta make sure we get that cleaned up down on 30th Street down there before we go forward here. So that's my comments. Thank you.
Might that be a motion?
That is a motion, correct. Support you.
Labor for one-
Labor for one week, yes.
Okay. Motion in a second. Councilman Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you. I was just checking the assessor site real quick, and obviously, time, it lags a little bit, but I think it is still showing Mouth of the South is the owner. But again, that's, it takes a couple of weeks for the assessor site to catch up with any transaction or any transfer deed, so I guess that's something we can check in the meantime, too, or confirm. But I have no reason to doubt that-
I have the emails from-
Yeah.
escrow company.
Ryan says it's true.
Title company.
Thanks, Ryan.
Thank you. And I might just suggest before we vote here that you do just get us a confirmation on that sale, and more importantly, contact the new owner, if it's his responsibility today, to get this addressed and to have that cleared before next week.
Okay, will do.
All right, thank you. Motion in a second. Real call.
Bagley. Harding. Johnson. Melton. Palermo. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, 6 to 0. Item 19, to consider a Class D liquor license application for Go Dega Market located at 423 South 11th Street.
Public hearing and vote on number 19 is today. Proponents, please.
Hi, Council. Name is David Kerr. Address is 300 South 16th Street. I'm the owner of this establishment or one of, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Second. Real call.
Bagley. Harding. Johnson. Melton. Palermo. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 19 is approved, 6 to 0. Item 20, to consider a Class D liquor license application for Rookies Bar and Grill located at 1702 North 120th Street.
Public hearing and vote on number 20 is today. Proponents, please.
Mr. President, members of the council, Russ Dobbs, attorney for the applicant. The applicant's here. We would stand by for comments and questions.
Thank you. Mr. Dobbs, I don't think I got an address for me. Could you just put that for the record?
Excuse me. 2800 South 110th Court, Omaha, Nebraska, Suite Number 1.
Okay, thank you. Any other proponents that want to speak today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Ms. Melton, you're recognized.
Thank you. And Mr. Dobbs, if you could come up, and I think new owner, you wanna- Hi, you just have to state your name and address.
Neil Anding, 14923 Seward Plaza.
Oh, thank you. And Neil, we, the council did get one opposition. Sorry, I was distracted by something. We did get one email in opposition from somebody that lives in the Candlewood 2 area, just kind of behind Rookies. And by the way, we haven't had any complaints. I think years ago, there were some noise complaints from the bar, but those were taken care of, and I haven't heard anything since. I know that your previous business owner of Maplewood Bowling Alley, correct?
Manager. I was a manager for 28 years.
Manager for 28 years. So I'm looking forward to you coming in and taking over Rookies Bar. It's just down the street from my house, so I'm gonna have to stop in in the next week or two. I'll bring my husband down because I think-
He's a pretty good bowler, yeah.
You've known him for many years. He used to bowl in your bowling alley for many years. But the opposition was, it appears that previously, people were, after they left Rookies at 2:00 in the morning, there was, they stated that then they were going to Hertz Donuts, that's open 24 hours, and so then we had apparently drunk people in the parking lot eating donuts and just maybe disturbing the neighbors. We talked earlier, though, and it appears Hertz Donuts now closes at 9:00 PM.
That was correct, since we've been there October 1st.
Since October 1st? And you've been closing at midnight?
Well, my partner and I, before we bought it, were there for about eight months, just sort of seeing if it was something we'd be interested in. And we saw right away that it was a pretty cool place and neat place, but after 12:00, it just turns a little different. Like, you know, mom says nothing good happens after midnight. So we decided, what we're keying on is the family atmosphere and the food and everything, so we decided to close at midnight, just to eliminate that happening. And it's worked. I mean, knock on wood, it's been very, very awesome to see all the people supporting us and having the kids come in and eat and stuff, so. So we're gonna close at midnight, and I like the way that's been working for us.
I think that's great, and a good family atmosphere, so we can bring our teenager with us, get him away from the video games and come have a bite to at Rookies and not feel like we're necessarily sitting in just a bar.
Exactly, that's the goal.
Well, I appreciate that, and I wanted, I just wanted to put it on the record, since we did receive that opposition, and I wanted to clarify that those just aren't issues at this time. So, thank you, and with that, I'm gonna motion to approve.
Thank you.
I think the motion needs to include a suspension of Rule 7.
Oh, I forgot about that. I'll move to suspend Rule 7. That's because you're within so many feet of a city park. We have to suspend that. It doesn't affect anything, but we have to suspend that and then vote.
Same second? No further lights. Real call.
Bagley. Harding. Johnson. Melton. Palermo. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, 6 to 0.
I don't think we need a second motion, do we?
Second? No, you do.
Okay. Motion in a second. Real call.
Excuse.
Bagley. Harding. Johnson. Melton.
Yes.
Palermo. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, 6 to 0.
Thank you. Thank you.
Item 21, to consider a Class D liquor license application for Good Evans located at 1040 South 74th Plaza.
Public hearing and vote on number 21 is today. I believe we have the applicant by Zoom.
Yes.
Ms. Leparko, you're recognized.
Chelsea Leparko. My address is 1422 11th Avenue, Carney, Nebraska, and I'm here with Good Evans to answer any questions.
Great, thank you. We can barely hear you. I'm just kidding, you're doing fine. Are there any other proponents here today? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Motion to approve in a second. Real call.
Bagley. Harding. Johnson. Melton. Palermo. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, 6 to 0. Item 22, to consider a Class D liquor license application for Aldi 42 located at 13215 West Center Road.
Public hearing and vote on number 22 is today. We also have the applicant by Zoom. Mr. Kelly.
Yes, Mr. President.
Gotcha.
Mike Kelly, 2804 South 87th Avenue, appearing here for Aldi's. This is, this store will replace the store that's currently really basically across the street, and we're here for any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed? Is there a motion?
Wave Rule 7.
Second. Real call.
Bagley. Harding.
Yes.
Johnson. Melton. Palermo. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, 6 to 0.
Second. Real call.
Bagley. Harding. Johnson. Melton. Palermo. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, 6 to 0. Item 23, to consider a Class D liquor license application for bottles and brews located at 10745 Mockingbird Drive.
Public hearing and vote on number 23 is today. Also have this applicant by Zoom. There we go, I think you're-
Hi, Michaela Barbosa here. Yeah, sorry. Michaela Barbosa, 1705 North 84th Street, and I'm the owner of Bottles and Brews LLC.
And here to answer questions, right?
Yep.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed.
It's on the next one, sorry. No, I'll just make the motion to approve then.
Real call.
Bagley. Harding. Johnson. Melton. Palermo. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, 6 to 0. Item 24, to consider a liquor license addition application for the Farnum Hotel located at 1299 Farnum Street to add an outdoor area.
Public hearing and vote on number 24 is today. The applicant, please.
Michael Sands, 1700 Farnum Street, on behalf of the applicant, the Farnum Hotel. The application is for an expansion of the existing license. Happy to answer any questions that you might have. And the general manager from the Farnum Hotel is here as well, Tony Moody.
Great.
Thank you.
We were there recently, and it's a very nice-looking new place. Nice job.
All credit to him, none to me.
Any other proponents here today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed. This one does need the suspension. Real call.
Bagley. Harding. Johnson. Melton. Palermo. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, 6 to 0.
Thank you.
Real call.
Bagley. Harding. Johnson. Melton. Palermo. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, 6 to 0. Consent agenda. Any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda and the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
The public hearing on agenda items number 25 through 33 were held on October 19th. Real call.
Bagley. Harding. Johnson. Melton. Palermo. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, 6 to 0.
We've had two items requested to be removed from the consent agenda, so we'll remove number 46 and number 49. So first, we'll have the public hearings on agenda items number 34 through 45, 47 through 48, and 50 through 60. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by name, address, and who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent. Seeing none, public hearings are closed.
47 and 48 to 59, I'm sorry, to 60.
Thank you. I'll second that. Real call.
Bagley. Harding.
Yes.
Johnson. Melton. Palermo. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, 6 to 0. Item 46, a resolution to approve change order number 2 with NLN L Concrete Inc. and the amount of $1,776,500 for additional work on the 2021 residential concrete pavement repair area 3507 project.
Public hearing and vote on number 40- Public hearing and vote on number 46 is today. Proponents, please.
Austin Rousler, Public Works Department, just wanted to offer one clarification from our conversation this morning. This change order addresses scope that was added for additional quantities at a different location. It's 120th Street from Center to Elm, and here to answer any questions you have.
Okay, thank you. Other proponents?
Sean Weers, 8535 Madison Street, project manager for NLL, here to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. Other proponents?
Ryan Amos of Olson Associates, or Olson at 2111 South 67th Street, here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents on number 46 today? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed? Ms. Melton, you're recognized.
Thank you. Mr. Rousler, I'm gonna ask you some questions that we talked about earlier. You could come back up. You just have to state your name.
Austin Rousler, Public Works.
Thank you, Austin. At this point, is this work that's already been completed?
There's some of the work in progress currently.
But some of it's been completed?
Yes.
And there's some work in progress?
Correct.
So at this point in time, we're, I mean, we'd be obligated to pay for the work that's done, or in the process?
We would pay for work completed, yes.
Okay. Is this common practice to add, because obviously, this is a change order from the pavement repair project that was currently done between Blondo and Dodge, 120th to 132nd. It's like four different neighborhoods. And this is a change order for additional work that's being done south, I mean, down south off 120th Center, I think you said Center to Elm?
Correct. To Elm.
Is that normal? Is that common practice to add change orders like that to existing?
It is very common at the end of a season, when we have some season left, and we've finished out contracts, and we have work available and contractors available, that before winter comes for us to take on additional work.
And so, that's because if you were to rebid it, you wouldn't be able to get the work in?
Correct.
So you're adding on to a bid that was already accepted?
We have unit prices, yep, correct. It's a unit price contract, and we have those prices established through bid.
And we've discussed previously that there was work that was not done to spec in the original neighborhood that this contract was done. So what has been done about that?
So one of the primary issue that we had in the original contract was the issue of sawing of transverse joints. We did catch that, thanks to your help and some help from residents in the area, and there has been a deduction of the contract price that's been made for that.
And do you know how much that is?
The deduction was in the order, just for the sawing, was around $10,000. There was some additional remove and replace work that was in a neighborhood of $40,000, so total deductions were around $50,000.
And in your opinion, the fact that it wasn't done to spec, what's going to be the impact on the quality of the roads, then, that were done in the area?
We may see some random cracking in the warranty period. We do have a two-year warranty period for it, so if we see random cracking that's related to the sawing of those joints, then contractor would be obligated under the contract to come and replace at their own cost.
Thank you, Mr. Rousler. Now, and this may be for the representative from Olson, but we also pay, and in this case, Olson Engineering, we pay a contractor a separate bid, but we have an engineering firm that is supposed to be monitoring the job that the contractor is doing to ensure that the roads are being built to the specs that were in the bid. And obviously, the Public Works Department uses specs that would give us good quality roads, is that right? I mean, isn't that how you determine what specs?
That's correct.
How much concrete to pour, what kind, the makeup of the concrete?
Put the specifications in the contract.
How it's gonna be cut, all of those things. We have very specific specs that are required by the contractors. So what is this, I mean, I guess my biggest disappointment is that we have a contractor that's not doing the right thing, we then have inspectors that aren't catching it, and then we have the city that's not catching, that the inspectors aren't catching it. So, I mean, what can be done moving forward to ensure that everybody's doing their jobs correctly, and that we're getting quality work done for the money that we spent? I mean, the voters of the City of Omaha voted to potentially increase their property taxes in order to pay for these road construction projects. That's how important good roads were to our citizens. We're fortunate enough that we didn't have to raise taxes, and in fact, got to have a property tax reduction because of the good bond rates that we got, but it's still taxpayer money that's being used for these roads, and we want good roads. And we want them to get done. So how are we holding, then, the inspectors? How are we holding the engineering inspectors? Don't they have some culpability and responsibility in this matter?
Totally agree with the sentiment, Councilwoman Melton. I totally agree with the conversation. We do owe it to the taxpayers to provide the best product. And what we do in situations like this is, obviously, we learn from it, and so we have a training and communication opportunity to move forward and make sure that we get better in that, you know, let's say we have a 98% good product and we miss 2%, so it's that 2% that we chase and we get better at, and that's what we're looking to do. And I can certainly let Ryan talk about his perspective from Olson, but rest assured that we learn and we train and we make the most of these opportunities where we can figure out ways to do things better and opportunities for training our people.
Well, Mr. Rousler, first, I actually want to thank you. I mean, the city has come out, when I've asked them to come out, and by the way, Sean, I know who's sitting back there from NLL, we've had multiple meetings, you've always been there, always been accessible, so I'm not, from a people perspective, I have found people to be, everybody to be responsive to the issues. But this is such a bigger issue, and I really think it does come down to, you've come out and met with some of the neighbors that actually, a retired engineer, that is the one that caught the fact that the roads were not being done right. And I appreciate the fact that you came out and you didn't try and cover it up, you came right out and said, "That's wrong." I mean, and I appreciate your honesty, and I appreciate the fact that you were willing to come out and evaluate it yourself. But I do think, since we have somebody here, if I could hear from Olson, to at least explain what your process is, and maybe why the engineer, the inspectors that are supposed to be there watching didn't catch the fact that it wasn't to spec, do you have anything that you could add? And you have to state your name for the record again.
Ryan Amos.
From Olson?
From Olson, yep. Yeah, we gather data along the installation and the project as far as punch lists, and we've got a punch list that's got over 100 items that will need to be addressed and will be addressed. Perhaps an item here or there gets missed, that's understandable that that can cause some frustrations, however, working with the city and working with Austin and his folks, we're certainly working to make sure we're not missing those items.
And I think this is kind of a bigger issue, and it may be what I would really like is to have an additional meeting with the neighbors, and I would like somebody from Olson, somebody from LLNL, and Sean, I, Mr. Weer, I think you're always willing and available, and somebody from the city, and I would like to have one more meeting to explain what's been done, what steps we've taken, what we've learned from it, and what we're gonna do moving forward, and I do think we owe it to those taxpayers to have one more meeting.
And I agree with that statement.
To explain that. Okay, I would appreciate that.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. I have nothing further.
Thank you. Mr. Bagley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. We had a discussion this morning in our Public Works Committee about this, and I guess, when I discovered this a couple of weeks ago, Councilmember Melton brought it to us, and it's just, frankly, it's disturbing to me that the city's paying contractors to go look and make sure the work is being done to specs. And had Councilmember Melton not been told about it, Ryan, would you have found this? I mean, that's a simple question, I guess. Would you have found this flaw in the work that was done? And it's a yes or no question. Would it not have been found if Councilmember Melton wasn't told about it? Can somebody answer that for me?
I do believe it would have been found during the punch list, walk through the final walk.
Okay, and you said, if I heard you right earlier, you miss, sometimes you miss one or two things? So does that mean on the punch list later, you'll find it? Is that a certainty?
I can't say that that's a certainty, in all honesty, no.
Okay, I appreciate your candor, and I'll tell you, as somebody new to this council, the bond that was passed by taxpayers because of the terrible condition of the roads, it's, this isn't in my district yet, but I know in Councilman Palermo's district, it happened, because we had the same conversation. And this is really disturbing to me, frankly, that the work that you're tasked with doing that we're paying, I don't know what it is, it's a ton of money, and you're failing to meet your requirement for what we're paying you for. So going forward, the meetings we have, and maybe you should come to the Public Works meeting next month when we have it again, because I appreciate you coming here today, but had Councilmember Melton not been told about this, maybe we don't discover this until three years later, when the two-year warranty's gone, and then we're going back to the taxpayers and saying, "Sorry, you got screwed here. The concrete's bad, and we're on the hook to pay for it." I just, the more I learn about this, the more upset I get, and I know it's coming to District 3, and it's gonna be in all of our districts where the roads are getting fixed, so I'm gonna drill down and work, and again, I applaud Councilmember Melton. Somebody came to her that had good knowledge of this and showed her pictures, and now we're here today, so I guess the good of it is we're gonna correct it, and you know that there's a microscope on you now, as there is with SNLNL, or NLNL with Sean and others. It's not acceptable. You missed one or two things, to me, for the taxpayers, totally unacceptable, so now we move forward and we try to correct this and make sure it doesn't happen again. So I'll look forward to in our future Public Works meetings, and I'd love to come to that meeting, Councilmember Melton, when you have him again, because it's good education, but I'll get your perspective, but from my position on the council, it's not acceptable, plain and simple, so. I can't tell you enough how, when I knocked at doors, streets were the number-one issue with people in my district, and if this kind of work is going on, then that's very concerning to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Austin, I just had a couple of process questions, if you wouldn't mind, please.
Austin Rousler, Public Works.
Thanks. I think you touched on this, but I just wanted to get a little more clarification on it. So the change order, I'm assuming, or I'm hoping you're gonna tell me, is that there's somewhere in the contract or the bid that was accepted, is there a clause that allows for additional work to be done?
Yes, so it's a unit price contract, and what that means is that the price, the total price that's established under the contract is an extension of the estimated quantities with the actual unit costs. And so when the estimated quantities change to become actual quantities, that's when we arrive at the final price. And so when we have a contract that's structured this way, when we exceed a certain dollar amount or percentage, that's what kicks us into a change order. So overruns are common.
But I think that was a change order for additional work?
Yes.
That was not originally contemplated in the original bid?
It's extra scope that was added to the contract.
Okay, so tell me when that extra scope is at, is it after bids are submitted and opened?
It's after, so the extra scope, we have a list of locations that we want to also pick up.
Right.
Don't know if we can finish them all within the contract here. So when we have opportunities like this, where a contract's finished, and we have additional locations, we do it every year with resurfacing, all of our resurfacing packages. We have a number of different panel replacement contracts, we do the same thing with, and it's done essentially.
Okay, so there are other contractors who are doing similar work, so why was this one selected to do additional work?
They had, because we have extra season. They're finished with the contract, and we have more season.
No, I know, but we have other contractors.
And we have other contractors that are doing the work, too.
Why weren't they offered the opportunity?
They are.
They are.
Yeah, typically, typically, typically any contractor that has the availability to continue to work before the season ends, if we have money available.
And I appreciate, we're trying to get as much work as we can.
Exactly.
I appreciate that fact. I just was more interested in the process and how that additional work gets awarded post-bid openings.
Yeah.
Does that also mean, with that bid, how is the engineer selected to be our owner's rep? In this case, it was Olson. Are they always following the NLNL projects, or how, tell me how that works?
That comes down to their agreement, the professional services agreement that we have with them, and it usually comes down to if we have money left in that agreement or not.
And again, so a contractor or an engineer, such as Olson or Lamp or, you know, TD Square or someone, you then, your department then selects who the, I'm calling them an owner's rep, because that's kind of what they are. You select that owner's rep engineer for the city and apply it to that, or you put it on that project? Is that how it works?
They typically follow the same contract.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Palermo, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. The rep from NLNL Concrete, if you could come up, please.
Yeah, Sean Weers, NLNL, project manager.
Okay, Sean, I appreciate you being here.
Of course.
And this certainly isn't our intention to have you not bid city work. We clearly need as many contractors as we can get, but when we approve the bid, you know what the specifications are, and if you're doing panel replacement, and we ask you to pour it back at a certain depth, ultimately, whoever follows up behind you, for whatever reason, it's your responsibility to abide by the bid that you submitted to us, that we approved, and we have given you the contract. So we can point fingers at everybody in the room, and we know we have a lot of questions on professional service agreements, but ultimately, it falls on you and your company.
Yes, I completely agree with that, and that's why we've taken a lot of steps to make sure that we, on our future work, are actually doing things ahead of schedule. We've purchased three new trucks that have wet salves with them directly, so after we get done pouring, the very next morning, we cut those depths right out to shoot. There's no questions about it. We get everything to where it needs to be, and then before we even open the road, we've already got it tarred back and everything. It was a learning curve for me. I've been working for NLNL for a year, and there's, unfortunately, not everything is easy for me to see right out to shoot, but I do learn, and I do take that, and I try to build on it. We want to be a beacon for every other contractor out there, that this is how things need to be done, and we're gonna try to do them to the right of our best of ability. I mean, that's the way I've been doing it all year long. Anytime I have an issue, I directly contact the city and say, "Hey, can you guys help me figure out a solution to this?" So we can get it knocked out as quickly as possible. I mean, this project alone was supposed to take 240 days to complete it, and we had substantial completion at 183 days, because I was thinking of the residents. I wanted to get out of their way before we were just becoming a big block in the road for them all the time. So we were trying to push it and get it done, and that's why Austin, I believe, gave us the extra work, was because we were able to do that. Unfortunately, we're in the last aspects of getting everything done in that neighborhood, but due to supply and demand, we're having some issues getting certain things. COVID kind of threw a wrench and everything, and people are having a harder and harder time getting supplies, like our inlets, but we are catching up, and we have a game plan But we are catching up, and we have a game plan to have everything completed before our 270 days are up, even on that project, while we're working on other projects. And we're getting it knocked out pretty quickly, I'd have to say. And we've been doing everything that the city sends to us. If we screw something up, we admit to it, and we try to do better and make our company better.
Okay, well, after a year on the job, you sure got thrown into the fire, and I appreciate you being here. I mean, this is what we want to hear, right? We're giving you the work. We, obviously with the voters approved, we have plenty of work, and it needs to get done. But ultimately, we want to remind you that it's your bid, it's your company, and we want you to do it right. Because if you do your job right, we don't need the others behind you. And that's just the truth. And this is what I've been preaching for years. So again, how many lane miles do you think you've poured in concrete this year? I know that's a tough question. It's probably not fair, but you could even say more than you should.
We normally measure our concrete in square yards. I'd have to say we did about 160,000 square yards this year.
Okay.
We're pouring a lot of concrete.
That's a lot.
I've increased how much NLNL has done. And to put in perspective for you, my father's also a city council member down in Kansas. So I respect the fact that this is taxpayer money. I completely respect it. We actually bid this job a million dollars underneath what the original, what our competitors say that they can do it for. I'm not looking to steal money from the taxpayers. I'm looking to get a job done and get it done right, and get it done for a good price. And I think, you know, we did miss the cut there. But when we came back to it, I saw what the issue was. We got together, we had a meeting, and I immediately went and bought three brand-new salves, bought some trucks, so that we could address that issue as quickly as we possibly could. And I will keep doing that. If I run into a problem that I missed or didn't understand properly, and somebody tells me I'm doing it wrong, we'll do what we can to fix it as quickly as we can.
I appreciate that. And again, thank you for being here. Is it Olson, Ryan? With Olson, I want to ask you a question, if I could. Name and address, please.
Ryan Amos of Olson at 2111 South 67th.
So as you heard me say, this truly falls on the person that is awarded the contract, which is NLNL. But with the way the city's growing, we have another step in the process. And you mentioned the punch list. And when people hear that, when I hear punch list, I think of you built a new home and the bathroom mirror is crooked, or a piece of tile needs caulking, or a wall didn't get painted properly. But when you say punch list on panel repair, ultimately, the only way you know if that punch list was completed or not is by failure. Because once you pull the panel out, and it's graded out, and there's a base put in, and you pour the concrete where all the different specifications come from, you're not going to know unless there's a failure. So we know this falls on the bidder, but the city's paying professional service agreements to engineers to make sure if there's oversight. If maybe for NLNL, the main foreman went on a lunch break, and the person who's taken over maybe doesn't have that experience, this is what you're here for. But it didn't happen in this case. And I have to believe out of the 160 cubic yards, or I'm sure that's not even right, that was poured, it's not the first time. So the city's paying a lot of money to these engineering firms for these professional service agreements. And I just don't feel the job's being properly done. So do you have anything to change my mind?
Yeah, we have soil densities at the panel replacement locations, and we do have concrete break strengths. And we do have technicians out there testing densities and testing concrete prior placement.
So tell me, NLNL's here, panel replacement, the concrete's broken up, tore out, the base is ready to go, the concrete truck pulls up. What do you do? What is your checklist, your journal? What does it tell you have to do to protect the city's investment in the roads? Like, what are your steps? What are we paying you for?
Our steps are such that we will have a soils density technician out there verifying the density of the backfill, if there is disturbed soil underneath that panel, or if it looked suspect. And we will verify the density of the soil and make sure it can withstand the load of that new panel. And then we will, following the specs and the special provisions provided and the city specs, make sure that that concrete placed is coming from the proper and approved batch plant. We will test it for air, we will test it for moisture and cement ratio. And therefore, once we gather that data, we provide early breaks, a three-day break, to see if that concrete has made 75% strength before we can open that roadway to traffic. And if it doesn't, we'll typically do a seven-day break. Typically, it's a seven-day break. But in situations like this, when we're trying to get the road open, we'll cast an extra cylinder so we can get an early break on it in hopes that it will get, make strength. And then, once it makes 75% design strength, we can open it to traffic. So our folks are verifying all that information on a daily basis. As you can imagine, we're pouring a lot of panels back. So we do verify that, and we do give that release to open that lane.
Okay, so let me ask you this, Ryan. If there's a problem, if something doesn't check out, do you reach out to the city project manager? Or do you go back to NLNL and say, hey, we have a problem, we have to redo this? How does that work?
We go to NLNL first and work with that, work with NLNL, and ask them to replace a panel.
Okay, how often do you do that, within a month's time?
Across all the projects that we have, I'd say probably 10 times a month. And I'm talking, we've got 40 technicians. So we're testing a lot of concrete in a lot of various locations. It's not uncommon.
Okay. All right, well, hey, I appreciate what you do. Obviously, you've heard me say this whole process needs revamped. There's flaws in it, and especially with the amount of work that we're going to ask everyone to do moving forward, we all need to stay on the same page, for the good of the cause. Because roads don't last forever, even if they're poured perfect. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, no further lights.
Has been done or in the process of being done. And I think Mr. Cousy, our city attorney, would recommend that we approve paying for work that's done so that he doesn't have extra work in getting sued for us not paying for work that was done. So I appreciate everybody coming down to discuss that. Initially, I think we had talked about laying this over so that we could talk to Olson and so that we could talk to NLNL. So Ryan and Sean, I appreciate you coming down today so that we don't have to prolong this. So I am going to move to approve payment for the work that's been done. But I just, I hope that both the contractor and the engineers are going to start paying more attention, because I know all of us here are going to be paying more attention to all the projects. Because this, we owe it to the taxpayers, all of us. All of you sitting there, all of us sitting here. We owe it to the taxpayers to make sure that the job's getting done right and that we're getting quality job for what we're paying for. So, thank you, and thank you for agreeing to have another meeting in regards to this particular project. I appreciate it.
There's a motion to approve? In a second. Roll call.
Bagley. Harding.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. Item 49, a resolution to approve the professional services agreement with Shamir Associates and the amount of $60,000 to provide professional services on the residential snowplow inspectors 2021-2022 winter season.
Public hearing and vote on number 49 is today. Any proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Palermo, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. So yeah, we have another professional service agreement in front of us, where we're going to hire a contractor to watch a contractor. And maybe the specs and the details and the job nature aren't so intense with plowing snow? Because there are, there are a lot of technicalities that go into pouring concrete. It isn't just as easy as I explained earlier, that they tear it out and a concrete truck pulls up and they pretend it just automatically goes flat. But with snow removal, it really is that simple. It's a person and a truck, a truck that probably doesn't have the right weighted blade, that probably drives too fast to be able to plow the snow. And ultimately, the snow's either there or it's not there. So we had a group of these last week, and we always stress to people not to repeat themselves. So I'm not, I'm not going to. I'm going to try a different angle to get my colleagues to reconsider. And you ask why? Councilmember Paul's been here, when he was here. He brought up these professional service agreements all the time. And he was serious about it. Because when the budget is presented to us, the budget is presented to us. There's not a lot of room, and we all want things done in our district. So moving forward, I'm going to make sure that I find something in there each and every week that probably doesn't have to be in there. Something that doesn't have to be in there where anybody's city services suffer. Okay? We have contractors because we want to get into residential areas sooner. And a lot of people say, well, wait a second. The main drags are running water curb to curb. But it doesn't matter because I can't get to the main drag, because I can't get out of, not only my driveway, I can't get out of my neighborhood. And so what happens is a complaint goes into the mayor's hotline, or to us, or to our staff, and once the snow flies, the phone rings like we're giving something away free. And I will read what I read last week, where we had over 8,000 snow-issue complaints just through the mayor's hotline over the last three years. So my question is, if we're paying a contractor to plow the snow, and they're doing the best of their ability because they're not actually a city employee in a properly-rated truck with a snowplow that can go curb to curb, they're probably just making a pass or two. They're not worried about getting close to cars. And if somebody moves their car, they're certainly not circling back. Is it worth it to have these people out there? We're up to 300,000 now. I can ask any one of these directors behind me if they could use 300,000 in their budget. And I guarantee what each one of them would say. I can guarantee what each and one of us, my colleagues would say if we said, hey, we got 300,000 to give to a nonprofit in your district. Spend it any way you want. They would use it, and so would these directors. We've heard, we need more money in the libraries. We need more money for violence intervention. We need more money for city services. So if we're not truly going to invest in city employees, then what's the point? Do we want to keep giving money to contractors? Contractors that are just checking if somebody plowed a street or not? We heard that the foreman ones were too busy. And maybe they are. But I wonder how busy they would be if they weren't 45 or 50 people short in that department. So if street maintenance is short, AEO1s and 2s and 3s and MR2s, and that's what keeps the foreman one busy, what are they doing with the worker shortage? Maybe they could actually go out and check these residential areas. Because it's not just a foreman one in snow operations when we're under a 12-hour clock. I don't know, so I'll ask. I'll ask Director Stube. I think he's here. Yeah, hey, Bob. So the question is, say we take a street maintenance district yard in my district, which is Dayton, about 52nd and Dayton. And say we're under a 12-hour snow emergency. At any given time, tell me how many foremen are there sitting in the office?
Bob Stube, Public Works. I guess I can't tell you how many of the total foremen, because we have foreman ones, we have foreman 2s, and we have foreman 3s. Foreman 1s are kind of that first entry level into a supervisory-type position, but they're also based on their job classification, considered as a working member of a crew. So normally during the summertime, those individuals would be part of either concrete crew or asphalt crew or something like that. And so they're working as part of that crew. Part of their job description also includes during snow events that they're supposed to schedule. So when you have an individual that is operating a truck, the foreman one is probably in the office handling, scheduling that. If there's an issue with a breakdown of a piece of equipment, they're supposed to handle scheduling, getting that particular piece of equipment repaired. They're also responsible for timekeeping and things like that associated with the employees that are working with them. So if we have 15 individuals, that would equate to essentially about three per yard. And I can't tell you if that's the exact number, but we have five yards. So three per yard, so you would have at least one foreman one on a 12-hour shift, and another foreman one on another 12-hour shift. So they're continuously working during that particular snow removal operation.
Okay. Is that fact, or are you just assuming it's only one? Because I have different information that it's more than one. I just want to be clear that we're telling people, how many foremen are at a district yard during a snow operation?
And again, I indicated that we have 15, and I'm going based off of what's budgeted numbers. I'm going based off of what is the number of district yards. And again, if we have 15, there's at least one individual as a foreman one that's working on that particular 12-hour shift.
Okay.
So when that 12-hour shift has ended, there's another 12-hour shift that starts, there would be another foreman one that potentially would be available then for that second shift when we go into a 24-hour operation. And again, when we're not in a snow operation, as I mentioned previously, they're a working person, you know, as part of that particular crew. So again, if the snow is not falling when we go into shifts, that particular individual is part of that working crew doing other things.
Okay, how about a foreman two in that yard?
I can't tell you how many foreman two we have. I don't have that information in front of me. There would be five foreman three. There would be foreman two that would be available. And as I indicated, the majority would be foreman ones.
So let's say in my district yard in street maintenance in a 12-hour operation, it's during the day, it's noon to midnight. We could have a foreman one there, a foreman two there, and a foreman three there. And the working foreman that you classified as a working foreman, he's not actually working on equipment. We do have CDO mechanics under a bargaining unit that actually work on equipment, correct?
Correct. I'm not saying that. They're a working member of the crew. So again, if the crew is out in the field, and let's say they're doing a concrete pour, they're part of that crew that's actually doing the concrete pour. So besides being in a supervisory role, they're also part of the crew that's actually doing the work. So the foreman one could be assisting with backing the truck up to make a pour in a particular location. They could be running a float to float off the concrete. They could be screeding, as we talked about earlier today when we met as a committee. So there's a number of things that they could actually do. They also have the ability, I believe, under their job classification, to operate equipment too.
Okay, I was talking in particular during a 12-hour snow emergency, and I surely hope the foreman one isn't out screeding concrete when the snow's flying. But I guess it is a possibility.
No, they're not doing that. During a snow operation, they are actually working actively with regard to the snow operation. So again, they have multiple trucks that are out in the field handling different routes. And so when those routes are completed, those particular foremen are responsible for scheduling. They're responsible for, if an individual comes in and says, hey, there's a vehicle broken down, they're supposed to coordinate getting that particular vehicle repaired. If there's materials that need to be, they're responsible for materials. So they're responsible for a number of things specifically related to that snow operation.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And as a reminder, from a meeting back, we realize there's no openings at the foreman level at the city. So it's a really good job. And if there is, maybe there's a new one now. But there was a lot of openings for those actually driving the snowplows. So if I know during the day, colleagues, that you have three foremen there to help supervise without having a professional service agreement, then here's our chance to save $300,000. I mean, it doesn't get presented often when you're presented a budget, and that's what it is. And it's not a knock on finance. They work incredibly hard to work and make sure the city's operating. But it's our job, as we know, with what we just had, where we had a contractor here who didn't perform their professional service agreement. This one's not even near as technical as the past one, which things were missed. So with the 8,212 complaints we had just to the mayor's hotline alone over the last three years, I didn't make that up, I got it from the website, here's our chance to save $300,000. And if nobody has an idea where to put it, I have a lot of ideas where it could go to actually help our constituents that ask us to find ways to help them during the year. And when they say we want help, they're not saying help by approving professional service agreements with engineering firms that people make 100-plus dollars an hour. I could talk all day on this, but ultimately, people are going to have to vote. And your constituents want you to make the right decision. They want you to take care of this money. And this is not money well-spent. And if it is, then you won't have any complaints this year when it comes to residential snow removal. But if you do, don't contact me, because I'm trying to figure out a way to make it better. Actually, you can contact me. I don't want somebody to take that the wrong way, because that's what people do. Still contact me, but I'll remind you of how we didn't save $300,000.
Councilmember?
Yes, Director Stube. One more question.
Thank you, appreciate it, Bob Stube, Public Works. So just to... Appreciate it, Bob Stube, Public Works. So just a couple points of clarification. One would be is that similar to a panel repair-type project, it's based on quantity. So if no work is done, heaven forbid, if we don't get any snow, no payment is made. It's only paid for actual work that's done. So if we call out the residential contractors, we would pay them in that particular case. If we don't call out the residential contractors, we don't pay them. Also, when we budget for snow removal, we budget for numerous things, and one of the things that we budget for is outside services. So that's incorporated into our snow removal budget. And then to keep in mind, too, is that that particular funding source, there's restrictions on that. So it can only be used for certain things because it's gas tax money. So I know that there's other departments would like that, and I'm sure they would, but we're restricted with regard to, under state law, with regard to what we can use it for. Thank you.
Yep. Thank you for the clarification. Let me ask you one more question, Director Stube.
Yes.
If you didn't spend that money, where does the money go?
Well, we're fortunate within Public Works, and that's a little bit different than other divisions where their funding kind of zeros out at the end of the budget year. Our money is in kind of reserves, so we like to have a reserve, and so I'll give examples of when we might need additional funding. A tree storm or something like that, where it's an unknown, it's an unbudgeted type of action that's required by Public Works, we've got funding available for that. For example, if there's additional major street resurfacing that can be done, as Austin indicated earlier, is that when we add additional project locations, if there's funding available for us that we have in reserves, we can use that funds for additional resurfacing projects on major streets. So those are some of the things that we would use that funding for if we have excess funding. And no different than, we might budget a million and a half dollars for salt, we only need a million dollars because we have a low winter usage, we'd have a half a million dollars available that we could use on other things, such as resurfacing and other types of concrete work.
Thank you. I have a question for the finance department.
Don drives the city finance department.
Hey, Don. I don't have time to look it up, but can you tell me of this separate fund that Public Works has and where I could find it?
It's in the budget book.
And what's it classified under?
Street and highway.
Street and highway.
Funding.
So the general fund's budget is put into Public Works, and any money that's extra goes back into the street and highway if it come from the general budget?
Could you clarify that again?
Say Public Works needs $50 million operating costs for the year, and they don't quite use all the money during the calendar year. Let's just say we don't get any snow, and that would be great, because we would save all that money. But you've already allocated the money to the Public Works Department. So are you saying that if they don't spend all that money, they put it into the street and highway fund, and it's Public Works' own little fund?
No, the money that funds the Public Works Department, the majority of it comes from street and highway and sewer revenue. They're only, and correct me if I'm wrong, the general fund portion funds our solid waste program and...
Graffiti program.
Oh, the graffiti program. So very little of the general fund goes to fund any of the public works programs.
Okay. Sorry about that. Threw you under the bus a little bit. So $300,000 could be saved, but it would remain in this Public Works budget. I will correct myself, even though every other department could use this money, and they could get it from the general budget, but that's fine. So we're still back to me asking my colleagues to reconsider saving the citizens of Omaha $300,000. You would save the citizens of Omaha $300,000 if you would reconsider. City attorney, I'm going to pick everybody before this is over.
Mancoozie Law Department.
Hey, Matt, could you tell me, how long would my colleagues have to reconsider saving the city $300,000 on the items that were approved last week?
If I recall correctly, the prevailing party would have to make the motion. In terms of the exact amount of time, I'll defer to my friend, the clerk.
Madam Clerk, it's your turn.
So she can have her turn, too.
A council member from the prevailing side could make a motion to reconsider. At this point, it would require a supermajority vote.
Thank you. So we still have time, folks. And it doesn't have to happen today. We're going to take a vote today on this one that didn't get grouped in with the rest. But you're going to hear more and more of these professional service agreements, how we pick them apart. And again, if there was wiggle room in the budget, maybe it would be different. But unfortunately, the budget is presented, and it's our job to find a way to save money. So with that, there is another light. I don't think I've called on everybody yet, but I still have some more questions, but I'll give up the floor, Mr. President.
Councilmember Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to look at my crystal ball here for a minute and ask the clerk a couple of questions. Before I go there, though, I guess I'll ask Director Stube. So last week, we did approve four of these, and so those, I'm assuming, are for different areas of the city. Each one covers a different area, correct?
That is correct. So I think this is the fifth one, so there's five district yards, and so we have five different consultants that we bring on board to handle that inspection work.
So I'm not sure, which district would this one cover, do you know?
I think it's District One, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah. All right. Okay. So now I'll go to my crystal ball questions for the clerk, because someone's absent today who did vote in favor of the other four last week. So let's assume if there is a vote to deny, and that were tied, then there could be a motion to approve, and it could be an outcome that you have a 3-3 tie. So I assume it doesn't pass, correct?
Correct.
Who is on the prevailing side in that situation so that it could be brought for reconsideration at a future date?
Those who voted no. And also, the council member who's absent could reconsider the motion.
Right. Okay. Thank you. Before I give up the mic, then. And so in addition to being on the prevailing side, if the motion to reconsider, I think our council rules state now that if it's to be reconsidered, it would take a, if it's not brought up at the next meeting, which it hasn't been, that it would take a supermajority of the council to bring it up at a future meeting. Correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. No further lights. Is there a motion? Motion in a second. Roll call.
Bagley.
No.
Harding. Johnson.
No.
Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
I could do this all day. I mean, I don't want to know.
Motion to approve.
Right. Right. I get it, but it didn't pass last week, so why would you pass this week? Yes. I mean, sorry. Yes, he passed this week, but not last week. No.
Mr. President.
Yes.
No.
Motion fails, two to four.
Next item, 61, please.
Item 61, an ordinance to approve various purpose and refunding bonds, tax exempt series 2021A, and general obligation refunding bonds, taxable series 2021B, in an amount not to exceed $168,400,000. A is amendment of the whole, requested by the finance department.
The voter number 61 is today. I would note the amendment of the whole. Is there a motion? Second. Roll call.
Bagley.
Hi.
Harding.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Item 62, an ordinance to approve a major amendment to the Roanoke Boulevard mixed-use district development agreement, planning, born and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on number 62 is today. The applicant, please.
I'm Kyle Hazy with E&amp;A Consulting Group, representing the applicant 10909 Mill Valley Road. Along with myself, Brent West, and Patrick Mulholland, part of the development team, are here as well in the audience to ask any questions or answer any questions that I might not be able to cover. The project that we are looking at is in the southeast corner of 120th and Roanoke. It's outlined here in the orange. It's approximately 7.7 acres and is currently part of the existing Roanoke mixed-use development agreement. We are requesting amendment to that existing agreement. Previously, within this 7.7 acres, there's been a mix of different uses. This is one of the, I think, the latest one. There was a mix of retail, office, a bank, and senior living, previously proposed at the site. What we are in front of you today, as part of our amendment, we are proposing a six-building, multifamily project with 237 units. There's a mix of two-story and three-story buildings. Building in the middle is the storm shelter with four units above. That is a two-story unit. And then also, we have a two-story building along the east edge. We place that there as kind of a buffer between the existing residents to the east, and then the rest of the buildings would be the three-story units. The buildings have front doors and resident access to all the surrounding roads and sidewalks, and all the garages are facing inward to the project, not to face outward within the neighborhood. There's a clubhouse on the east end, or on the west end of this building along Roanoke Boulevard. It'll have a pool, a patio area, and that connects to a 10-foot trail that we have along the Spain Road that will connect to the ball fields to the south, and then also to any future developments and retail or office uses to the north to help support those businesses. Dan Mulholland has had direct contact with some of the neighbors and the Neighborhood Association over the months that we've been working on this project. He did reach out again to the Neighborhood Association and the neighbors about two weeks ago to inform them of this meeting to make sure they're aware. We have not heard anything back from them. I don't know if anyone's in the audience today or not. With that, I'll make myself available for any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Any other proponents that want to speak today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Yes.
I just was curious, what neighborhood associations or homeowner associations did you contact?
We contacted the ones to the east. On top of my mind, I do not remember what the name of that association is. Is it Roanoke? Okay. Roanoke Neighborhood Association.
So you only contacted one?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Melton, you're recognized.
Thank you. And I know we've been talking about development around this area. Very pleased that we were able to get the turnback tax through the legislature this past year for tranquility. So I think that this is just another sign of development in this area.
Yeah.
And getting excited about development in this area. And what I appreciate, and the fact that we don't have a whole bunch of people here, and that I haven't heard any complaints from the neighborhood, is because of the job that you have done. And that the Mulholland's have done.
Yes, they've been very...
And reaching out, and also taking the steps of making a two-story building and the buffer, and then putting all the landscaping, which the neighbors know will be nice because it's going to come from, most likely, from Mulholland's.
Exactly.
And so what you've done is you've taken all of those steps to make sure that it's on the outside of the neighborhood, you're not affecting the neighborhood, you have the buffer, and so I just appreciate all of those efforts. And I know that the people who live in Roanoke appreciate those efforts, too. They have a very active neighborhood association as well. So I just want to thank you and your team for doing that, and I think that this is an excellent location for this multifamily housing project right on 120th, and I think it'll encourage even more development in that area.
I agree.
Just kind of the start.
Yes.
Thank you. And I'm sorry, I can't move to approve it today, it's just public hearing, but I will be making a motion to approve it next week.
Okay.
Thank you. No further lights. Next item.
All right. Thank you.
Item 63, an ordinance to approve the Blue Stem Phase 1 and 2 Tax Imcrement Financing Redevelopment Agreement.
Public hearing on number 63 is today. Proponents, please. Ms. Hadley.
Good afternoon, Bridgette Hadley, here to answer questions you may have.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents?
Larry Shore, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. I'm opposed to this because I'm kind of wondering, affordable for who? And why is there's no city participation in this one where there is in others? But I also want to make a complaint to you, Mr. Fester-Fritten, today under the Open Meetings Act, that I can hear Amy Melton just fine, but I cannot hear most of the rest of you, and it's a long afternoon without being able to understand what Mr. Palermo says. How many times do I have to say this? I have no problem usually in the morning. They had their mask on today, so I had a little problem. But there's always a problem in the afternoon, but not with Amy. Couldn't hear her. Most people were probably not here because they can't. Why sat all afternoon and not be able to understand what you're saying? And that's a nice little smirk, Mr. Palermo, but I heard very little of your long dissertation. Thank you. And I don't have a problem hearing you fellows when you comment to me as I'm walking away. But of course, you can invite me to stay at the microphone and discuss it.
Thank you. Any other opponents today? Seeing none, public hearings closed.
When public hearing can be held for items 64 and 65, ordinances to amend section 23-177 of the Omaha Municipal Code by adding the employment classification entitled Grant Manager and Grant Assistant Personnel Board recommends approval.
Public hearing on items number 64 and 65 is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, Deb Sander, City HR Director, here to answer any questions that you have, along with Claire Anderson Hubbard, who is our HRIS and Compensation Manager.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Are you a proponent?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Louise Humanaus, 2709 Dewey Avenue. I'm a proponent. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Bagley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. Deb, a couple of questions for you. I'll try not to throw curveballs at you, but these positions here that you want to change, tell us why you want to do that. We had a discussion in our committee last week, I think it was, just the reasons why you want to do this.
So on item number 65, there are two positions that currently exist within the Simtech classification, and we're just re-titling those two positions from grant writer to grant assistant, and then the grant administrator to assistant grant manager. So those are just retitles and a little bit of adjustment, so that way we're in line with the market and how the market structures. The number 64, item 64, is the creation of a new job called Grant Manager, and over time, the amount of grants and the number of grants, the amount of reporting, the requirements for the reporting have increased exponentially. So there's federal grants, there's state grants, there's local grants, there's the grants that you all approve that are Omaha community grants, and all of that has to be monitored. So we are looking to create a grant manager position. We do have someone that's in a not, it's an unclassified position now, to classify all of these particular jobs, so that way we have continuity of operations.
Right. That's what I was looking...
Right, that's what I was looking for. I appreciate that answer. And as I've learned in this position, those grants are vital to helping the city budget and other things. Is that fair to say?
Yes. I have, I'm sorry. It's more than $15 million? I have to look here at my cheat sheet. Just with some of the awards, over $15 million. And some with additional funds, there's more than $5 million. I have an entire listing. So it's millions of dollars that come and go through the city that, again, has to be reported on. All of the different grants that have different, whether or not they're federal, state, or local, have different reporting requirements. And if you miss your reporting requirements, then not only do you lose your funding, but they want that funding back that they've already paid you.
Right. And I, for, on the board of a nonprofit, I certainly can understand that aspect of it. So I appreciate the good work your team does, and I'll support this today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Palermo, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to apologize to anybody. My microphone was on five. Usually, it's on seven. So I did turn it back up. Deb, I wanted to thank you in HR for this position. We know how important this position is, and it's tough when people leave. They have to play catch-up. We've had it here at the city recently. And those who are in this world of grants know how important to whatever company you work for that you have a grant writer that's there and showing up every day and putting in the work. So thank you for protecting this job. And I'm sure whoever, I think we already have a Grant Manager. We're not applying for a new one. And I think I know who she is, but she's on vacation. I think she'll appreciate the salary range adjustment as well. So thanks for this.
And it's in line with the market, their salary ranges, yes.
Thanks for this one.
Thank you. And just want to follow up on that comment, too. Having worked in the mayor's office, I understand the desire to do this. I think it has some merit. But anyone currently in this role who might seek this new position has to refile for that position and go through the personnel process, right?
That is correct. It is competitive process because it's a classified service.
Right. I think that's important to note, just so folks know that this abides by all the personnel rules the city has, and there's no one that is becoming a civil service employee automatically. They have to apply like everybody else.
Correct.
Yeah, all right. Thank you. No further lights. Next item.
Item 66, an ordinance to approve the Highway Safety Programs Grant in the amount of $95,000 during the project period of October 1, 2021 to September 30, 2022.
Public hearing on number 66 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 67, an ordinance to approve the Drug Enforcement Administration Grant in the amount of $58,116 during the project period of October 1, 2021 to September 30, 2022.
Public hearing on number 67 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 68, an ordinance to approve a lease purchase agreement with the City of Omaha Public Facilities Corporation for improvements to the riverfront revitalization area in the amount of $70 million in lease revenue and refunding bonds.
Public hearing on number 68 is today. Proponents, please. I believe we have the Finance Department coming down to give a little overview of this item.
So Don Drives of the City Finance Department. I'm, the proposal before you right now represents new money as well as refinancing money. The new money is for projects that have already been approved, either in the CIP or through resolution or ordinance. For example, computer equipment in the amount of $675,000, the police helicopter, $3.1 million, the SCBA mask for the fire department, $2.3 million, some lawn mowers and other equipment for parks in the amount of $385,000, $20 million for the riverfront project, and then $38 million for refinancing. If you have any other questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Thank you. It was a large number and a little bit unusual in terms of having some things put together, but all financed on our lease purchase bonds and all previously approved projects, right?
Correct.
And the refinancing. Yeah, thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Non-action items, items 69 through 116 do not require public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and our vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda, as well as the date the item is expected to appear on agenda for consideration.
Second, roll call.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Meeting is adjourned at 3:35.